July 8th, Portland City Council Meeting. If you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come; it will be done on earth as it is heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, so we forget those who trespass against us, and who do not titillate us, but deliver us from evil. That's the King of Kings. Amen.
Don't clean your glasses, I am not Lee the Heartlaw. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mike Snyder.
Present.
Ron Ackerman.
Present.
Denise Sardi.
Present.
Gabe Bealow.
Present.
Jerry Trowley.
Present.
Nicole Defritas.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Present.
Thank you. Folks in front of you, you have the minutes from the June 10th Portland City Council Regular Meeting. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes as presented? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. Tonight, we have a guest presentation. I would like to call on Kim Sedlack from the Ottawa County Senior Resources. Go ahead.
And Larry Heartlaw.
Yes. He's on the Ice Cream Social Committee. Mike, first, I want to thank you for all the hard work you do for the Fourth of July event. I don't think most people understand the small committee we have. I'm on the Ice Cream and the Food Committee, and then we all branch out and get our own volunteers. This year, the main sponsor of the Ice Cream and Food, who purchased everything, was Nydecker, Lebec, and Crossers. Tom and Kathy are out of town, so they could not be here tonight. But on behalf of them and Ottawa County Senior Resources, the Fourth of July Ice Cream Social Committee and Food would like to say a special thank you to the staff of Ottawa County Senior Resources and their families, and the Dambury Senior Center seniors came out to volunteer their time on Fourth of July. And to the Ice Cream Scoopers, Larry, Lauren, Commissioners Jody Regal and Jim Sask. By scooping ice cream and selling hot dogs, apple pies, and meals, we raised $1,072.59 to be used for the 2015 Portland Fourth of July Celebration.
Thank you, Larry.
No. Let me take your picture.
No.
Hurry up. You get up here.
There it is. Here, I'll put your hand in.
Oh, okay, thank you. Here you go. Oh.
We'll get this right one of these times.
No, you do.
Has he taken the picture yet?
I hope so.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And I have more to say a little bit later this evening. But thank you, guys, very much for your hard work. We will now go to the man's report.
Thank you very much, Pro Tem. First off, I would like to thank the Fourth of July Committee for all their hard work and dedication, obviously, a great display, a great event. I think it was a little bit more busy than usual, I would assume.
Yes.
Judging by the amount of traffic that was going through downtown. But I also want to congratulate very own Gabe Defritas for his 5K Walker Run, the Squirt Gun, what else? Stravaganza?
Star-spangled Squirt Gun Run.
There you go. I understand you had quite, also had quite the records, over 385 participants?
Yes, 355.
Fifty-five, wonderful. So great energy in the city, so we're very grateful.
Thank you.
Also wanted to mention, just like Councilmen, we are working, we had a meeting earlier today with both Denise Plummer and Paula Henry for Pogomire Group Design. We are working on the master plan for the water distribution and fire suppression for the city. Speaking loud enough when you're doing one of these, I'm trying. So we are at the preliminary stages, getting a lot of things together and understanding what size pipes are and whatnot like that. I know that Eric Peterson will be working hard, he'll be going out doing a lot of pressure testing, so we are looking forward to keep moving that forward to create that master plan, which will also help us be successful in security grants, so I'll make some of those improvements. And that is all tonight.
Thank you, sir. Auditors' report.
Thank you, Mr. President of the Court. I just want to remind everyone that I had the chance to send out the month-end reports for the period ended June 30th, 2014. If you haven't received those, please let me know.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hanson isn't here this evening? Law Director's report. Mr. Colston, Safety Service Director.
Thank you, sir. Well, Fulton Street should be open tomorrow. Fulton Street should be open, I'm sure everybody's happy to hear that. They will still be working on dirt and grass, there may be some slow times there, but they have a couple of things to do on some manholes, and once they get that tomorrow, we should be able to open that back up, so everybody knows that. The other thing tonight, there's an ordinance out there, it's 1514, I think that Mr. Wilber gave you guys. Basically, what that's doing, we've already given this permission to do Fulton Street and Maple Street as far as the sewer relining. We would like to be able to go further if we have extra money within the budget for that, and that's what we're asking tonight. We're going to bid that as an alternate, so if we do not, then it will mean nothing, but if we do, then we'd certainly like to have, I would like to have the capability to be able to move forward, get that. And that's all I ask tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Hickman, Police Chief's report.
Nothing tonight.
Chief Johnson, Fire Chiefs' report.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. And again, thank you for all of your work this past weekend, keeping our community safe and allowing us to celebrate a wonderful Fourth of July. In correspondence, we have the, you've all been given the minutes from the Finance Committee, the Planning and Development Committee, the Laws, Rules, and Ordinances Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Committee for the month of June. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes into correspondence? Thank you. Ms. Phillips, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no third readings of ordinances or resolutions this evening, we have no second readings of ordinances and resolutions. Under first readings, you have before you Ordinance 15-14 and Resolution 14-05. Could I please have a motion from the floor to add those to the agenda this evening? Thank you very much, Mrs. Phillips. And a second? Thank you very much, Mrs. Defritas. I'll take a breath, because I know she's writing really fast. Would the Court please read in title and summary only, Ordinance 15? Oh, yeah, we do, thank you.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm part-time.
We have a motion to add these. All in favor of adding these to? Did roll call? Roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ron Ackerman.
Yes.
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Jerry Trowley.
Yes.
Mike Snyder.
Yes.
Nicole Defritas.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sardi.
Yes.
Thank you. These are now added to the agenda. Now, would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 15-14?
Ordinance 15-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the relining of the sanitary sewer for Fulton Street from Fourth Street to Seventh Street and Maple Street from Perry Street to Second Street, and the relining of such other sewer lines as the Director may determine and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Would Council like to take any action this evening on Ordinance 15-14? Nicole, I would like, Mrs. Defritas?
I would like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings for Ordinance 15-14.
Thank you, I have a motion to waive the three required readings, so I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gabe Bealow.
Yes.
Nicole Defritas.
Yes.
Lisa Sardi.
Yes.
Ron Ackerman.
Yes.
Jerry Trowley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Snyder.
Yes. Three required readings have been waived. Would Council like to take any additional action on Ordinance 15-14? Mrs. Defritas?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause of Ordinance 15-14.
Thank you, I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on 1514. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Bealow. Would the clerk please call the roll on retaining the emergency clause?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Gabe Bealow?
Yes.
Nicole Defritas?
Yes.
Thank you, the emergency clause will be retained. Would Council like to take any additional action on Ordinance 15-14? Mrs. Defritas?
I would like to make a motion that we pass Ordinance 15-14.
I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1514, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Nicole Defritas?
Yes.
Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry, thank you. Discussion, Mr. Ackerman.
Yes. Question probably out of ignorance, is there any monetary limit to how much we can spend on relining, or are we permitting the very responsible man, are we permitting the Safety Service Director to spend without recourse on the sewer lines?
Yeah, I can answer that. Currently in the budget, under the sewer fund, we have a land for capital improvements, and that's where this specific project has come out of. In speaking with the other members of the administration, we have set aside roughly around $300,000 to do the sewer relining specifically for this area.
Okay, so this would be if the bidding for Fulton and Perry, Maple came, under that price, we would be able to reline other sewers without having to draw other ordinances later on?
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
And if I understood what Mr. Colston said earlier, it's, the bid for other stuff is going to be, not an add-on, but?
It's going to be as an alternate.
Alternate, as an option if they choose to do it.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion this evening? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Nicole Defritas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Gabe Bealow?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 15, correction, yes, 15-14 has passed. When she's ready, would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Resolution 14-05?
Resolution 14-05, a resolution designating the month of July 2014 as free community paper run in Portland, Ottawa County, Ohio.
Thank you. Would Council like to take any action this evening on Resolution 14-05? Mr. Bealow?
I'll make a motion to waive the three required readings.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gabe Bealow?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Nicole Defritas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, we will waive the three required readings. Would Council like to take any further action this evening on Resolution 14-5? Mr. Bealow?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Resolution 14-05.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution 14-05, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Would the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, any discussion? I'm seeing none. Now would the clerk please call the roll?
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Nicole Defritas?
Yes.
Gabe Bealow?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 14-05 has passed. We will now go to business from the floor. Mr. Ackerman?
Ah, no business today, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Sardi?
I would like to also say what a nice job you did to the forces of July, I didn't know what. It was very nice to see people there, there were a lot of good compliments, fireworks, and everything was still okay, so, good job.
Mr. Bealow?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, my drive to work, NPR made a mention of the Portland Lighthouse being dropped north of Derby Pond, so that was exciting, and it's getting some play in the national audience, or at least Cleveland metro audience. Today, the Republican National Committee picked Cleveland for its 2016 convention, so I hope that the city of Portland, the Visitors Bureau, and Chamber of Commerce does everything it can to attract whatever business spillover there could be for folks visiting Cleveland in two years. And that is all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bealow. Mr. Trowley?
I'd just like to announce 7:15 Emergency Services Meeting, it'll be next Tuesday, 5:30.
Mrs. Defritas?
I would like to thank the city for all their help with our Run Walk, Tracy and Chief Johnson and Chief Hickman, we appreciate all their help keeping everybody safe, and after we paid all our bills and everything, we ended up with about $5,500 that we'll be able to, you know, use towards a scholarship that'll be in my dad's name that we lost in March, going to somebody majoring in skill trades after high school, and he was a master carpenter, and so to be able to carry on his legacy is kind of special to us, so we appreciate everybody's help. And congratulations, Mike, on a wonderful event that you guys had throughout the day also. And I think we represented our city well to all the visitors that we had here, and so proud to be from Portland, as it is every day, but we were able to showcase our city, for sure. And that's all I have.
Ms. Phillips?
At our last meeting, I said, based on that sheet which you passed around from your committee about all the things to do on the Fourth, if people couldn't find something to do on that day, they were just not looking. Well, it was pretty obvious that everybody was busy, and there were plenty of things to do on the Fourth, because people were just all over, all over, and a lot of them were from outside of the area, based on the car license plates uptown and stuff, so it was definitely a success to the whole group. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. This evening, I have a few things, of course. I would like to announce that the Portland Firefighters Association will be having their annual Chicken Barbecue on August 10th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the fire station. Chief Johnson has tickets, I have some tickets, members of the fire department have tickets, $8 per meal, dine-in or carry-out, it's a wonderful, wonderful, I believe it's chicken and beverage. This Saturday, at 11 o'clock at Waterworks Park, the Portland Police Department will be taking on the Portland, or the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office in a softball game. If you'd like to come down and watch that. Mrs. Sardi, Mr. Holman, and Mike Druzbaki have agreed to volunteer to be the umpires for that event, so that should be a fun time. Again, that's 11 o'clock at Waterworks Park this Saturday. The Ad-Hoc Committee, comprised of myself, President Heartlaw, Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Ackerman, met a few weeks ago, we presented the minutes, which I forgot to head to the correspondence, but we're going to announce this week, and announce in two weeks, what I'm about to announce, which is a recommendation to change the order of discussion, order of events, for the council meetings. We are going to remove comments from the public at the end of the meeting, and move them up to the beginning of the meeting immediately before the mayor's report. And the intent, after discussing it, the intent is to allow the public to comment before council meetings. It also will allow those that are going to comment on things unrelated to what's on the agenda to get in, say their piece, and then give their option to leave or stay, as opposed to sticking around sometimes for several hours for their five minutes. So we'll, again, we'll make that announcement today. Linda, their President Heartlaw, will make that announcement on the 22nd, and then she'll ask for a motion to, from the floor, to make that change. I would like to announce that the Finance Committee meeting for next Tuesday will be canceled. As I announced last, at the last meeting, the Finance Committee will have a series of public hearings on Thursday, the 17th of July, right here in this, in this chambers, and I would like to read the order of hearings. Again, this is related to discussion of the 2015 city budget in the general fund. We've broken the general fund, the general fund is broken down into 17 different subcategories, and we'd like to hear feedback from the public on where they think the discretionary funds should, should be spent, those limited discretionary funds. At 4:00 PM, Recreation and Cemeteries will be discussed. At 5:00 PM, Ottawa County Deductions, Civil Service, the Transfers Line Items, Parking Lot, Senior Center, and Planning Commission will be discussed. At 6:00 PM, the Council, Mayor, Auditor, Treasurer, and Law Director. At 7:00 PM, City Hall, Administration, and Safety Service. And then at 8:00 PM, the Police Department. And again, we ask that the public come in, we'll have a sign-up sheet, your presentation will be limited only by the number of other individuals choosing to speak during that hour, and then we'll adjourn, wait for the next hour to come up, and go from there. Again, that's next Thursday, the 17th, right here in the council chambers. And finally, this evening, again, I would like to thank the entire community. I get way, way too much credit for the Fourth of July. I just come up with some crazy ideas, and people on my committee say that it's a good idea, it's not your nuts, and we go from there. But it really takes an entire community to put on the Fourth of July, as you will see here as I read through these individuals and groups, and forgive me, with an event as dynamic as the Fourth of July and all the activities, if I have forgotten to put you on here, it's not intentional, and my apologies. So thank you to Pyrotechnico, the Portland Fire Department, Chief Kent Johnson, the Portland Police Department, Chief Rob Hickman, Safety Service Director Tracy Colston, the Portland Service Department, Mayor Vince Leal, thank you very much, my fellow members of City Council, who allocated a couple thousand dollars for the event, The Beacon, The News Herald, PortlandRadio.com, the Brian Beck Family, Friendship Food Stores, 1812 Food and Spirits, Great Lakes Popcorn, Kroger, Bassett's, Toffs, the Portland Lions Club, Nydecker, Lebec, Crosser Funeral Home, you heard what they did for the, for the event, the Our Guest Inn and Suites, Computer Resources, Lake Erie Vacation Rentals, Country Gentlemen, Moon Dog Jerry Vest, who does a wonderful job in Waterworks Park, putting out the music in conjunction with the fireworks, Trinity United Methodist Church, St. John Lutheran Church, the Ports Committee, the folks that brought us the tall ships last year. If you recall, I didn't jump up and down and scream and holler in May and June that we needed money, the Ports Committee wrote a very substantial check to help fund this year's festivities, however, unless we're having another tall ships festival, which I don't think we are, I'm going to be jumping up and down next May and June, so expect that. The Portland Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Portland, Perfect Color Hair and Tan, Mary's Blossom Shop, Ottawa County Senior Resources, Vicky Gresh, Judy Halsted, Lindsay Winfield, Dee Sees, Vicky Wadsworth, Mindy Thicke, Kelly Rigoni, John Kirk, Nagoya Japanese Steakhouse and Sushi, Alakart Cafe, Carol Fox, Susan Larcy, John Wall Robenstein, who I found out is not four people, as his name would suggest, it's just one person. Frish's Big Boy, Lock, Dog, and Barrel, Bella Rose Boutique, Jags, Napa Auto Parts, Bucks for Booms donors donated several hundred dollars towards the festivities, VFW Post 2480, The Voices of Freedom Singers, and of course, my Planning Committee, Debbie Testor, Kim Sedlack, Tom and Kathy Priestman, Anil Alievus, Rick Ramos, Amber Ramos, Kenny Holcomb, Gabe Defritas, Brock Ryder, Bruce Bachelor Glader, and Greg Fox. You know, record numbers for the, for the fun run, Firecracker QD Contest, Trinity Church was standing room only. I would have been happy with 50 cars at the car show, we had close to 150. The Voices from Freedom Concert, if you had the opportunity to hear that, goosebumps three or four times throughout that, that event, and of course, and everything that happened at Dart with, with the fireworks. It was a wonderful, wonderful time. We have a good start in funding for next year. I'll be making my pitch during the administration portion for, for funds for the fireworks next Tuesday, and with that, I guess I'm done. Any comments from the floor? Sir?
Here to Philbon, 121 Wall Street. I got a question for Tracy. Put your hand up. Thing about the flowers at the cemetery, they go by the rules. I've had flowers, I bought flowers, artificial flowers, and I spent between $35 and $40. I had them all at the end of the graves, and I went out there two weeks ago, and they were all gone. And I asked one of the workers out there, and he said, "Well, I don't really know." He says, "You'd have to talk to them."
We did, we did the cleanup longer than that, I believe, I don't know what day we did that.
And I put them out there right, right before Memorial Day, and I noticed it wasn't mowed yet, but I still put the flowers in at the ends of the grave on there, and my aunts, my grandmother, grandfather, my mom, my dad, my ex-wife, and my...
I can't argue with you, Philbon, we threw away if it was in the wrong spot. I can't tell you if it was, I did not see your grave, but we threw the stuff away that was in the wrong spot, that's all I can tell you.
Well, they're supposed to be at the end of the graves, and that headstone, and that's where they were, and they're all gone. So somebody should be responsible. I don't have money to throw away. Just because our councilwoman there don't care about anybody at the cemetery.
I think that's out of line, so...
Anyone else?
Jerry? Jerry Yonky, 117 Cedar Street, I have a question for the mayor. Have you been in touch with Mike Rose, Washington Properties?
I've been in contact with him, I spoke with him, sure.
Has there been a meeting or anything like that? Is there a meeting planned?
I spoke with him privately.
Privately? And? What have we talked about?
We talked about potential development of Waterworks property.
Okay, so I should just sit back and wait and see what happens?
I believe everyone here is doing the same thing.
Okay.
I really don't have anything to report, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Until that work's done, it's all hearsay. I don't work with hearsay.
Okay. I have a question for the auditor. Do you have anything to do with the bed tax, Mr. Auditor?
That's actually a function of the Treasure Department, but I mean, I see the revenue coming out of it.
Okay, I see where she had the big facts, or the figures, anyway, for the bed tax back to May and June, and I just wondered if that was, what kind of an increase that was from years previous?
I'm not sure about years previous, I know when I did the month-end reports for June of this year, it was, the bed tax, I believe, is substantially higher than what it was last year, as far as other comparative figures for prior years, I don't have that information right on hand, I definitely get that, so...
Well, I was wondering, you know, with the people coming into town and everything like that, was there really an increase in the bed tax?
And part of, part of the issue with the bed tax is that it's at least a month behind the regular figure, so for, if you have a month in June, you won't actually see the reports come in until late July, early August, so we're always kind of a month behind, but I can definitely look into that.
What was the contribution from the city for the fireworks display?
$2,000.
Did I see another hand in the back? Yes, sir.
Down thinking, choo-choo, two heavens. For you, for those that missed it, on Wednesday, July 2nd, the Ottawa County Register's editorial supported Court's Public Initiative and the citizens' right to vote on the future of their part. Court is pleased that the Register's editorial board supports our actions to protect the citizens' rights. Court is also pleased that the editorial board compares Court with the Save Our Shorelines Organization of Sandusky, since some of our goals are similar. Now, if only more citizens shared that wisdom. Thank you.
Anyone else see? Yes, sir.
Rick Notter, 680 East Perry Street. Thank you, Mr. President Hickman. Regarding the proposed change to the agenda of council, and putting the comments of the citizens first, I've lived here 22 years, and I think that that, putting this, having the citizens' comments at the end of the meeting has been in place for 22 years. I certainly haven't seen or heard any objection to that, particularly what, what questions, concerns precipitated the bringing up of this change, because otherwise, it seems like an overt attempt to keep the citizens from commenting on what happened at that meeting, since their comments would be at the beginning. What's, what, what started this whole change? Why?
Observations, comments, comments from others that have been brought to several council members. There, there's actually nothing in the state statute that requires public comment. This is a council meeting, not a, if you will, public comment meeting. We're still allowing public comment, we're just making it look more convenient for all of you to make the comments.
I'm not questioning at all your, your power, your ability to do that. I'm questioning the motivation to do it.
To be convenient.
Convenience. How was it more convenient to have the comments at the beginning as opposed to the end?
Well, for, in this case, we didn't have anything outside the norm, if you will, from, from public comment, but on the occasion, we've had individuals come in to speak on something outside the realm of normal, normal stuff, for lack of a better term, and rather than have them sit around, some of our meetings can last multiple hours. Allow them to speak at the beginning, make any comment on any proposed legislation on the table prior to taking that action, and move forward from there.
My observation has been that when people come in to make a presentation, city council usually yields to them, and it has not been a problem.